Come to the, whatever day this is, June 21st, 2017 council work session. And the first order of business manager?
So, your first work session's on Measure 49, and before staff got started, I wanted to introduce Lauren Summers. Lauren is, in a sense, new to our office, but Lauren worked with me when I was back at Herang for a number of years before I came in-house, and then we were lucky enough to take her away from her prior employer, and so she's now with us again. Alyssa and Lauren will be tagging the presentation on Measure 49.
Thank you. So, Mayor and councilors, it's a pleasure to meet you or re-meet you, as the case may be. This portion of the work session concerns a Measure 49 claim that was submitted by Chad and Katie Wilson for their property located at 1777 East 30th Avenue. I'm, since this is the city's first Measure 49 claim, I'll kick things off by giving you a tiny bit of history and then talking about the requirements of Measure 49 and the process, and then turn things over to Alyssa to discuss the specifics of this claim, as well as information that's been submitted by the claimants and others related to the claim. And then, following that, there will be time for discussion and any questions that council may have. So, in terms of quick history, you may remember that Measure 49 is one in a series of ballot measures that the folks in Oregon have adopted, related to compensation to private property owners for restrictions of use and reduction of value of their property. Measure 37 was sort of the previous iteration of this. That was adopted in 2004. The City of Eugene actually adopted its own process for dealing with Measure 37 claims. I know that, I'm aware of at least one Measure 37 claim that was filed, and perhaps there were more. This is a little bit different than the Measure 37 process that you may be more accustomed to. Measure 49 narrowed the scope of Measure 37 in terms of both the types of claims that are available and the relief that's available to property owners. And the city's adopted Measure 37 provisions don't apply. We're operating under a state law process for processing claims. So if it's a little bit different than what you've seen in the past, that's probably why. So, the land use regulation at issue in this claim is a portion of Chapter 9 of the code that limits the height of a detached secondary dwelling unit on residential real property. So that's just kind of by way of background. In terms of Measure 49 itself, for Measure 49 to claim to be valid, it has to meet a number of criteria. First, the land use regulation that's being complained of has to have been enacted after January 1st, 2014, but within five years of the date of the claim that's met here. In addition, the land use regulation has to have been enacted after the owners acquired the property. That is true in this case as well. A third criteria is that none of the listed exemptions in Measure 49 can apply to the particular land use regulation, and they don't in this situation, so that criteria is met. Then, we move into, the land use regulation must fall within Measure 49's definition of a land use regulation. So Measure 49 defines what a land use regulation is for purposes of Measure 49 very specifically. And in terms of regulations that apply to cities, in order to be a land use regulation for Measure 49 purposes, a regulation must be a provision of a city comprehensive plan, a zoning ordinance, or a land division ordinance. Yes, this is part of Chapter 9, that restricts the residential use of private property that is zoned for residential use. The property that is the subject of this claim is zoned for residential use, it's in the R1 zone, they're asking to use it for a residential purpose, so the only question is whether the regulation restricts the residential use of the property. Alyssa will talk to you about that in more detail, in terms of the claim itself and the information that has been submitted, but briefly, applicants appear to be arguing that the residential use of the property is restricted because prior to 2014, the existing structure on the property would have automatically qualified as a secondary dwelling unit. After this regulation was adopted in 2014, it does not. It does not meet the height restrictions. On the flip side, staff believe that the property, that the claimants may still place a secondary dwelling unit on the property, there are other ways to get to that solution. So, the use of having a secondary dwelling unit on the property is not restricted because that is still an available use to the claimants. Finally, the complaint of regulation has to reduce the fair market value of the property, and the way that claimants are required to show that is by submitting two appraisals, one that's stated a year before the effective date of the regulation, and one for a year after, that show a reduction in value of the property. Those appraisals must comply with the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. Measure 49 requires that. And there's information that's been submitted into the record showing that the appraisals submitted by the claimants do not comply with the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. So, at the end of the day, if the council finds that the claim does not comply with all the requirements of Measure 49, then council may deny the claim. If, however, council finds that the claim does comply with all the requirements of Measure 49, you have two options. You can choose to either compensate the claimant for their reduction in fair market value of their property, or you could choose to waive the regulation as to this particular claimant to allow them to have that secondary dwelling unit on their property in spite of the height restriction. So, that's my quick overview of Measure 49 requirements and the process, and then I'll turn it over to Alyssa to talk a little bit more about the specific application.
Thank you, Lauren. So I just, what I'm going to be covering is the process that we used for this Measure 49 claim. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the information that is in the record before you, and then I will get into a little bit more specifics about how it meets up with those last two requirements that Lauren mentioned. So in terms of process, as Lauren mentioned, this is our only Measure 49 claim that we've seen in the 10 years since Measure 49 was adopted. Interestingly, for the three years that we did have Measure 37, we saw about 10 claims, and I, maybe three, I think about three of those we actually waived a regulation on. Some of them kind of just petered out as well. So the Measure 49 statute does spell out some parameters generally for how we process these. It includes, you know, what the applicant needs to require, how we review it for completeness. There's an opportunity for folks to comment, and there's also a decision deadline. It doesn't require that we held a public hearing, but makes sure that we do have an opportunity for folks to comment. Obviously, in this case, we felt it was important to hold a public hearing, and that was in January, if you recall, January 17th. We are required to send a 30-day notice prior to that opportunity for folks to comment, and we did that. It went to owners and occupants within a certain distance, obviously went to the property owner themselves. We were also required to send it to the county, to the city, to the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, and the appropriate neighborhood association. So, following the public hearing, the city council left the record open for people to have an opportunity to submit more testimony and for the applicant to submit rebuttal materials. Subsequent to that, the applicant, or the claimant's attorney requested two separate timeline extensions to the decision deadline, and for a total of 90 days, and that brings the decision deadline to June 30th. Based on those timeline extensions, you may recall, last month you voted to establish a new closing of the record, which gave everybody kind of a final opportunity to submit testimony, and it gave the applicant a final opportunity for rebuttal. And just so, we did mail notice of this opportunity to the same parties who received the original notice, as well as to anyone who had submitted testimony up until that date, so that all the parties who had participated or that were interested got notice of that. This coming Monday, on the 26th of June, you are scheduled to take action, and again, Friday, the 30th, is the deadline for council to make a decision. So that's where we are with the process. In terms of the record, so that includes the claimants, all the claimants' application materials, which you got as part of your packet in January. It includes all of the testimony that you received prior to the public hearing, all the testimony at the public hearing, as well as everything you received during the last open record period. That last chunk of information is attached to today's agenda item summary, and all of that is available online as well. In regards to the testimony, there are kind of three common themes, as we saw it, that were raised. First was really the validity of the appraisals that were submitted by the claimants, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about that. The second was whether or not the regulation, so that height limitation, does it really restrict the residential use of the property? And again, I'll get into that just a little bit more. And then third was whether, that the existing residence on the property, what size is it? There was some conflicting information in the record on whether or not it meets the 800-square-foot limitation for a secondary dwelling. Just real quick on that, and there is information in the staff memo that's part of today's AIS, but we did take a look at the building permit plans that were submitted, actually to convert this to a secondary dwelling, and I had our staff who reviewed building permits measure it to see what square footage they came up with, and it just falls under 800 square feet by their measurement. So, in that case, it would qualify for that provision of a secondary dwelling. So now for the specifics of the claim itself, you know, the two questions before you are, you know, whether or not this constitutes a land use regulation as that term is defined by Measure 49, and does a regulation really cause a reduction in the fair market value of the property? So as Lauren mentioned, the land use code provision in question is a provision in the city's zoning ordinance. This was adopted by ordinance in April of 2014 by council, and this was part of the single-family code amendments. It was the package that, I think we called it the interim protection measures for the university area, and it applied only to Amazon, Fairmont, and South University areas to the R1-zone property. And it did a number of things. It added new standards for secondary dwellings, alley-access lots, accessory structures, and then there were a number of other development standards that were changed. The particular standard in question was basically a height reduction, a height limitation that was placed on secondary dwellings. So, the claimants, or the property owner alleges that this particular regulation restricts their residential use because it precludes them from turning that existing residence into a secondary dwelling. So, before April of 2014, it met the height standard for secondary dwellings. Once those code amendments were adopted, it no longer meets the height limit for a secondary dwelling. However, despite these, this height restriction and limitation, we do believe that there are a number of ways that they could have a secondary dwelling on their property. So this restriction doesn't preclude the property from being developed with a primary and a secondary dwelling. It may not be the way they had intended or anticipated, or even, you know, wanted to have a secondary dwelling, but there are a number of ways that this property could be built with a secondary dwelling, and those are also spelled out in the memo that's attached to today's agenda item summary. So, our finding is that this doesn't, that this particular provision does not restrict the residential use of the property in that it doesn't preclude them from developing both a primary and a secondary dwelling on that lot. And then, regarding the question of whether or not the regulation causes a reduction in the fair market value of the property, as you may recall, the testimony and evidence submitted by several parties actually raises questions about the validity of the claimant's appraisals. They were required to submit two appraisals. One was a year before the provision was enacted, and one is a year after the provision was enacted. When they initially submitted their application, they had submitted appraisals for the wrong years, and we had highlighted that, the city had highlighted that to them. And when they resubmitted those appraisals, the only thing that had changed was the date on them. So the one that said 2012 went to 2013, and nothing else had changed, including the value. And so those are also, that's something that was definitely raised in the testimony, is that, you know, how could it be that nothing has changed in those, you know, a year later? There were also questions raised in the testimony about the comparable properties used. Those of you who purchased property anytime recently, you remember what the comps are. You know, you try to find properties that are similar to yours, and there was questions really about the locations of the properties that were used. Some of them were outside the urban growth boundary. The zoning, I think one of them was a higher-density residential, and whether or not even if the secondary dwellings were legal. And then, another issue that was raised was kind of questioning, basing the appraisal on a hypothetical dwelling as opposed to using the actual structure. And then finally, the city did commission a desk review of this appraisal, so rather than having, you know, an appraiser go out and appraise the property, they reviewed the appraisal itself, and this report concludes that the claimant's appraisals do not meet the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice, and this is something that is required of the Measure 49 statute. And there's been no evidence to the contrary submitted into the record. So, based on the deficiencies with the appraisals, and because we don't believe the regulation in question precludes them from having a secondary dwelling on the property, staff is recommending denial of the Wilson Measure 49 claim. In advance of Monday's action, and unless we hear otherwise from you, we will be providing you with a revised report and recommendation outlining those reasons why, as well as a revised resolution. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions.
Okay, who wants to be in the queue here? Claire? Anybody else? Yep, come, take it away.
Maybe.
So I just have a question about the Measure 49 rules themselves, and then a couple of questions about the appraisal. So typically, with land use questions like this, they would be an administrative decision rather than coming to council. So is it that the Measure 49 law requires it to come before the elected body?
So, Councilor Sret, this is not a land use decision. I just want to make that clear at the outset. The Measure 49 statutes themselves specifically state that it's not a land use decision, and the appeal process for appealing the city's decision is different. It does not go to Luba. There's, it's a writ of review action instead. In terms of who makes the final decision, the statutes talk about it being the city's decision, and so in this case, it was appropriate to bring it to council.
Okay.
One of the reasons that this comes to the council, just like Measure 37, is that if a determination is made that the claim is valid, the result of that is either the city pays compensation, or you can waive the regulation. Because the regulations we're talking about are ordinances that the council adopts, it seems appropriate that it's only the council that gets to actually decide, should we allow a property owner to basically ignore an ordinance that the council's adopted.
Thank you.
Just like with Measure 37, this will come to the council.
Yeah, and I've never had Measure 37 experience, so this is a little new to me. But then, in terms of the analysis of the appraisal, one, do you know if they, the property owners contracted with a licensed appraiser, a professional appraiser, to do those appraisals?
They were done by a local appraisal firm, and they were signed by, I believe they were signed by a professional appraiser, yes. So they didn't do them themselves, they did hire it out to a local firm who does real estate appraisals.
So can you give a little more information about your determination that the appraisals didn't meet the professional standards as required by Measure 49?
Well, it was, so I would clarify, it's, I mean, not specifically the city's determination, the city hired another professional appraiser.
Okay, because you said you did a desk.
Right, we hired actually somebody to do a desk review, correct.
So, we hired an appraiser out of the city of, well, who lives in the city of Salem, to do that desk review. So he's a certified appraiser, and we asked him to review the appraisals that were done, submitted by the claimants, and his conclusions were, so as opposed to our conclusions, his conclusions were that it didn't meet those, I only know it as U.S.P.A., the uniform standards for appraisers, it didn't meet those, and he explained why in the AIS, or attached to the AIS are the details of that. We can provide more information about the specifics, if you want, in the AIS for your Monday night meeting, but they are, the reasons why, and the particular criteria for the U.S.P.A. standards that were not met are explained in that. And as I think Alyssa said, that information was submitted before the record got closed. After the record got closed, there was an additional week that the claimants had to submit any additional information or argument, where they could have said, no, wait a minute, that desk review is wrong. They did not do that. So what we're left with then is, the appraiser we hired who said doesn't meet the U.S.P.A. standards for these reasons, and there's nothing in there to say, well, no, the city's appraiser got it wrong.
Yeah, and I'll study those further. I guess it's problematic, you know, as a non-professional, to be casting judgment on this professional's opinion versus another professional's opinion on the same documentation, but I appreciate the information.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I have this right, as I understand it. Guy's got a smaller place, wants to build a bigger place, and call the first place the secondary dwelling unit, and the new place the primary, right?
Correct, correct.
Is there anything around our ordinances or state law that helps us from the standpoint of understanding what a secondary dwelling unit is by definition?
We have a local definition in our land use code. As far as I know, there is not a definition at the state level of what that entails, but we have, we have a local definition, and we have, you know.
So whether it's built first or last, it's bigger or smaller, it doesn't really matter, just that there's two?
As long as it meets, right, it meets, and it meets the development standards. One of them has to be owner-occupied, there's a number of standards that have to be met. But we have had in, you know, several cases where there was a smaller home on the property, and they came and built a primary and converted, essentially converted the smaller home into the secondary dwelling.
Can you, sufficiently to your satisfaction, make the argument that what the claimant wanted to do in the first place before the revision could have been done the way they wanted to do it?
I believe so. Prior to the adoption of those code amendments, they met the height limitation, they met the square footage, our understanding, they met setbacks, I mean, they met the general standards for having a secondary dwelling.
From what you know.
By, you know, evaluating that primary dwelling, yes.
From what you know of what they wanted to build, could they have built it the way they wanted to?
I don't know enough about what they were proposing as the primary. I don't know enough about it. But I will say, these code amendments didn't apply any new standards to that primary dwelling or preclude them from building a primary dwelling. They can absolutely have a primary dwelling right now, that the small house on the property is the primary dwelling.
So the substance, the boiling down of the claim is, they can't build something as big as they wanted to before because the law changed?
They can't, well, they can, but if they do that, they can't keep this as a secondary dwelling in its current configuration.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chris?
Yeah, I think my primary question was answered. Mike asked the same question I was going to ask about, where they were going to live. So the only follow-up I would have is, whether your home is designated a primary or secondary dwelling unit is based on your occupancy of that building, or is it based on you saying it's your primary dwelling?
It's partly on the size. So there is an owner occupancy, but it doesn't matter if the property owner lives in the primary or the secondary property, or secondary home. They can live in either one, but they have to live in one of them. Primary and secondary are really based on the size, so the secondary dwelling, again, has a limitation of square footage, so it's intended to be smaller, kind of an accessory use to the main home. Oftentimes, they're attached, or, you know, an apartment within the home. In this particular case, it was, you know, a one-bedroom house above a garage.
Okay, so the primary dwelling unit on a piece of property is, from the city's standpoint, determined by size?
Well, or if there's only one home on there, then that is the primary, so.
Okay, good point. If there's two buildings on a piece of property, the city determines which one is the primary dwelling unit based on size?
Well, and typically what happens is, if you have a primary dwelling, or I have a primary dwelling, and I want to build a secondary dwelling, and my existing home is over 800 square feet, then I have to build it, I have to build that second one as a secondary dwelling. So it's essentially on size, I guess that's sure.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of what's primary, what's secondary.
Right, I mean, typically, the primary comes first.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a little unusual, but it's not, it's happened before. I mean, typically, there will be a primary, and somebody will come along later and build the secondary, or they'll do it at the same time, if they're, you know, make it attached to the main structure or part of the main, the main house.
Yeah, I mean, I actually know somebody who owned a large piece of land, and they had an 1,100-square-foot house that was their primary dwelling. They decided they wanted to move to something smaller. They built an 800-square-foot home, but that's where they are going to live.
And in our eyes, that's the secondary dwelling, because it's, you know, 800-square-feet or less.
Because of size, okay, so it's not based on your occupancy, it's basically based on the size?
Correct.
Okay, that clears up a lot, thank you.
Yep, Alan?
Why is there this confusion about what the square foot is?
You know, I looked, I think, I think there is good reason for it. It was, it depends who measured it and how they measured it. So there was someone who measured it from the outside of the ground floor, and that got the, that got the largest. So the garage on the ground floor actually has the biggest square footage, but that's not how we measure for what the footage of, you know, we don't look at the footprint of the garage to tell you what the square footage is of the secondary dwelling. And then there is some attic space up there, but that doesn't count, and so it really, it was based on who measured it and how, or really, it was on how they measured it.
And the rule says, measure it from the inside, so it's.
Right, yeah, so it's on the inside.
It has a peaked roof, and you have livable space on the edges of that, that, like I used to live in when I first moved into my house. I could walk five feet either way, but not all the way to the wall. That's not livable space?
I mean, I think it's going to depend where the walls are, frankly.
Yeah, okay.
I'd have to see the.
If they're in from the edge.
Yeah, and how it meets the definition.
One of the other issues is that our code isn't as specific as it could be, and so there's a little ambiguity in the code as to how you actually measure, and so the way that staff measured for this property is the same way that staff has measured for other properties. Others may have looked at the code, interpreted differently, and said, oh, we actually measure a bigger space. So that's also one of the reasons, I think, why different numbers were coming out, in addition to whether you include the garage or not.
And when you did your measurement, it came out to be 700, which is under 800.
Right, right.
Okay, so have there been other instances where, in other parts of the city, where people have modified their secondary dwelling unit to make it that, where it was over 800 square feet, where they modified it so that they then could build a primary residence? square feet, where they modified it so that they then could build a primary residence?
You know, I'm not familiar with any, but that doesn't mean it hasn't occurred. I, I'm not sure of, I honestly don't know the answer to that, so...
So, I'm, I'm interested in the precedence this sets. So, if anybody has a unit that, in, in this area that was, that met the standard before 2014 in these three neighborhoods, which are all in my ward, and by the way, the interim standards that this comes from are interim because we haven't gotten back and done the work at the university because we've been screwing around with other things, and, and so those interim things have been now, I think, four, at least two years old, maybe three years old. So, interim is becoming a misnomer. So, once we get back on track with working with the university, interim will go away, by the way. So, if someone were to have a, anybody that had a dwelling that was, that met the standard before the 2014, they could come in and say, I want a waiver. If we say yes, this is, we give them a waiver because the precedents would be set.
Wow, and I, frankly, I'm not sure how many situations are going to be like that in these three particular neighborhoods where there's an existing dwelling under 800 square feet that doesn't meet the height limit or, you know, what other, other limitations that were placed, the slope setback. It's the height limit and the slope setback. I mean, there have been some other instances where people have wanted to convert, and I think there's a, there's a fellow in your neighborhood or a family in your neighborhood who have a small accessory structure on their property, they wanted to convert it to a secondary dwelling that was always their plan, and now it doesn't meet the slope setbacks under the current...
Right.
...regulations. Glenn, you look like you were...
Alan, so as a legal matter, whatever action you take on this one would not set a legally binding precedent for any future claim that was filed because either in that future claim, either they meet the requirements of Measure 49 or they don't. And so, if you decide on this one that they, they meet the requirements and so you're going to waive, the next one that comes to you, let's say they meet the requirements, you could decide, well, they met all the requirements, but we're not going to waive, we're going to pay compensation. So, what, what you do on this one doesn't bind you legally to how you deal with the next one. As you heard from both Lauren and Alyssa, I mean, the recommendation you're going to see Monday is to deny, and it's not really based on the square footage issue, the simplest basis for denial that we're confident would be upheld if somebody appeals up to the court is the fact that we have an expert who has said the appraisal that the claimants submitted does not meet the requirements of Measure 49, and there's no rebutting evidence to say that it does. And so, that basis, that you will see in the decision document, that forms not the only basis for denying, but that's going to be the primary basis for denying.
Yeah, so, so back to the appraisal. So, we've got conflicting experts and, and the claimants didn't rebut what we put forward as an, as a deficient appraisal.
Correct.
And in the AIS, we mentioned several places where it's deficient. And, and so, could the claimant then say, okay, we drop this case, then come back and reapply for Measure 49 based on the same evidence and same stuff, but then rebut this, or come up with an appraisal that then did meet the requirement and, and, and request a waiver?
Lauren, I can't remember if Measure 49 would allow somebody to resubmit.
I, I think it would.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything that would...
Could rebut it.
So, in that case, they'd have to pay for a new appraisal, so there would be that cost, which is not insignificant. They would still have the other issues that have been raised as a basis for denial, the primary one being, and you heard Alyssa talk about it, that the height restriction that's at issue does not actually preclude the use that they want to make of the property. They can still have a primary and a secondary dwelling on the property, they'll have to spend some dollars in order to get there. And under Measure 49, one of the other primary questions is whether the land use restriction at issue actually restricts the use of the property, and by use, that means a, a land use of the property, not, you know, okay, so you can't build a 12,000-square-foot house, you can only build a 9,000-square-foot house. You can still build a house, so that regulation would not restrict the use of the property. Here, the, the decision document would also have information in it that says this would not, or that the regulation at issue does not restrict the use. So, yes, they could file, it sounds like, another Measure 49 claim at a not insignificant expense, but there would still be another basis for denying, even if they actually came up with an appraisal or the two appraisals to justify the reduction in value.
So, the four options that we put forward all have a cost associated with them. So, the, limiting the use, does that have a price tag on it above which it would say, then it really does prohibit it? If it's a million dollars, it really does, if it's $1, $10,000, or a million, is there a, is, is it just a straight, straightforward, yes, it does or doesn't prohibit the use?
At the moment, it's, I would say, it's the straightforward, either it prohibits or it doesn't prohibit. There have been very few Measure 49 claims filed inside cities. When Measure 49 was really intended to deal with the problems outside cities and Measure 30, you know, so Measure 37 goes away, let's primarily address the issues in rural areas and we'll still have a component for inside cities, but very few claims have been filed inside cities. So, we don't have court cases that analyze the question that you're asking, but there's nothing in Measure 49 itself that says, well, if the cost got so high, that effectively restricts the use. So, the position we would take, at least until a court told us otherwise, is it either restricts the use or it doesn't. If it costs you more money, there's nothing in Measure 49 that says, well, it's, if it costs you $100, that's okay, but if it costs you a million, that's not, where do you divide that line? There's nothing in Measure 49 to say, that's a question that's relevant.
Emily?
Thank you, I think most of my questions have been answered, but for clarification, the present house can't be a secondary unit because it's too tall.
Correct.
If, if we don't get into the appraisal part.
Correct.
So, can they make it shorter? Do they take out the attic?
That was one of the options.
Yeah, it is actually part of, the attic's kind of on the same level. They could, I mean, they could make it shorter, I'm not sure what that would do with the ceiling heights. It's about four feet is, is the difference at, at its highest point. So, they could, I mean, the, the AIS, or my memo in the AIS kind of goes through their options. They can remove the kitchen and make it just living area and build another secondary dwelling unit somewhere. They could get rid of it altogether and build another secondary dwelling unit somewhere. They could alter the height or make the, make the unit downstairs within that existing structure, or it could remain the primary residence and they can build a secondary dwelling unit.
So, without modifications to the present building, it can't be a secondary unit, they would have to, the second building would be the secondary unit regardless of what they did to the one that's there now?
They could, I mean, there are ways to decommission this one, so it's no longer considered a dwelling, but you're kind of, you're on the right track. It, it cannot meet our secondary dwelling standards at its current height.
So, it has to be the primary. They could build a secondary, but they wouldn't get the big house they want?
Right, unless they took the kitchen out of this particular dwelling that's there and it was no longer a dwelling, it was just a living space. So, that's also an option.
Okay. I am concerned about setting the precedent of people coming forward with this with the hopes of either getting a waiver or more concerned of the money because it takes a lot of time and money on our part. And so, you know, it might be like buying a raffle ticket on their part. And I certainly don't want to encourage this, and to my mind, that they can't, the present house can't be a secondary unit requires to me they need to do something else, and there's a lot of options. Thanks.
Okay, second round, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I heard you say that this is not a formal land use process per se, but can I, can, can I ask about indoor consideration information outside the record?
Good question, Council Clerk, no. This is a decision that is limited to the record, so you should be considering only the materials that have been submitted into the record and the testimony that was given at the public hearing.
Can I ask ancillary questions that arise from the record?
Such a...
You can ask anything you want as to whether we can give you the information, different question.
I have several friends who are property appraisers. One of them, a few years back, and I don't remember the specific circumstance, but told me about a bad appraisal that they had seen in a circumstance that made them, as a professional, unhappy. They mentioned a guiding, an association that I think you mentioned earlier, or a governing board that deals with appraisers statewide. Could I, can you remind me the name of that?
No, the initials, it's the, that must be the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice.
Make sure stuff comes out well. Right, okay. So, in this case, has there been any complaint filed against appraisal that was done and we found deficient?
So, that information would not be in the record, and let me explain, if it helps at all, why you can't consider information outside the record. So, this isn't a land use decision, so it doesn't go to Luba. And the reason it's not a land use decision is because Measure 49 says it is not a land use decision as that term is used with Luba. But Measure 49 also says that if there is any judicial review that anybody wants of the decision, whether it's an opponent, another interested party, or the claimant, judicial review is available of your decision, but the decision is processed as a writ of review.
Gotcha.
A writ of review means it's based on the record, so that what goes up to the court is here's the record that was developed, and so if you start bringing in information that's outside of the information that's been presented to you, it puts the parties, the interested parties in a, well, impossible situation because they don't have an opportunity to actually say, wait a minute, whatever you're talking about isn't right. But it also means that the judge isn't now looking just at the record that was developed for purposes of this review. So, if you can't find it in the record, and if it's not a question as to, you know, is there a law out there that is an overarching kind of question, you can certainly look at laws that aren't part of the record. But if it's in terms of evidence, facts, something like that, then no, it needs to be inside, it needs to be in the record.
And so, you would suggest that the question I just asked is sufficiently outside the record that I should shut up?
It, it sounds like you're asking about facts as opposed to law, and so, we're not going to be able to give you that information.
Okay, thanks.
Claire?
Thank you. Continuing on the question of the appraisals, you mentioned in your presentation that the original appraisals weren't for the correct time periods as required by Measure 49, and then when they were resubmitted, the only things that had been changed were the dates. So, is the implication then that a new appraisal was not conducted at that time, that they just took the old ones and put new date, the correct dates on them to meet the law?
And I think what the desk review talks about is that they should have considered that there was an increase in, in, in sales prices in that area over, at least over the year. Yeah, so there is a little bit in the, I can't pinpoint where it is, but there is something in the, the review of the appraisal that talks about that, that they should have taken some of the market into consideration.
The other piece, and we can double-check and get this information for you in the AIS for, or at least present it to you on Monday, is I believe the answer to your question is they literally took the first two appraisers, or first two appraisals, and they changed wherever it said 2012, it now says 2013, and wherever it said 2014, it now says 2015. Every other word, I mean, other than those years, is identical in the second batch of appraisals as the first one. So, if your question is, did they do a new appraisal, the answer is no. All they did was, in the word processing document, was change the date.
So, I'm no professional appraisal. I, I do know a retired gentleman who is an appraiser, but my assumption is that the appraiser would sign and date the document of the appraisal, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, and it's in your...
As a professional, yeah, right, the gentleman who did the desk...
Originals are in here.
The original, you've got the original. So, it, it is concerning and it, I mean, the implication is that they changed the dates on the documents without going back to the appraiser and asking them to do the work.
Sorry, I, I didn't mean to suggest that the claimants did that.
Okay.
I believe they came from the appraiser.
Thank you, that's very important.
Yeah, and, and we'll double-check, but yeah, no, my, my intent was just saying that when the appraiser sent new documents...
Okay.
The only thing that got changed was those dates, that there weren't new comparables...
By the appraiser.
By the appraiser. There weren't new values, there wasn't new analysis.
Okay.
It's like, oh, wrong years, change the years.
And then I guess I'd just point out, in our record, in our packet, I think the last communication we got from the claimant is, was received June 12th, 2007, from attorney Bill Cluse, and it does not address the appraisals whatsoever. It only talks about the size and the fact that our ordinance changed the allowed size, and that's the main rebuttal or factual piece that they offer in terms of their request to have this claim approved, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Zelenka?
So, the essence of this boils down to the two tests with the Measure 49, which is, one, the regulation must restrict the residential use of the residential zone private property. This is restrict the residential use. That's, restrict is not the same word as prohibit. So, every regulation restricts what's going on on residential use, and so I'm confused about how this actually applies. We've talked about using the word prohibit, so can you elaborate more about that? And that's kind of, it's a yes/no standard there, right?
It, it is a yes/no standard. An example of a restriction on use, in the R1 zone, there are, and Alyssa would probably know exactly how many, but let's say there are 20 different types of uses you can have... Help me out, what are the different uses besides just a residence?
You can have a church or a school, the park.
And so, now, instead of being able to have all of those uses, you have said, actually, you can't have a school or a church, and so you have restricted, although that wouldn't be a residential use, but you have restricted the kinds of uses. In a R2 zone, it may say you can have a single-family home, you can have a duplex, you can have a triplex, and you pass a, an ordinance that says you can no longer have a triplex. So, you have restricted that kind of use. Here, if you said outright, you may not, right now, you can have a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling, and if you said, from this day forward, you can no longer have a secondary dwelling, you have restricted a kind of a use, can't have a secondary dwelling anymore. But if what you're talking about is, well, you used to be able to build, well, take the university area, up until those interim standards, you could build, I don't remember, a six-story, eight-story building right up against a single-family home. You said, from this day forward, you can no longer build something that's higher than three stories, and then, you know, sort of steps back. You're not restricting the use of the property, it can still be used for an apartment complex, but you're restricting how it gets built. And so, that would be something where we said, that is not a restriction subject to a Measure 49 claim.
Right, so how it gets built is different from actual, it's 120 feet, by the way, it was 20 stories.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thus the, Rob. So, so, as long as, as long as you can still use it, the property for its intended purpose, which is a primary residence, which this... which is a primary residence, which this could be, or with a secondary dwelling, the use doesn't get restricted.
That is the, how we have interpreted it, yes.
And then beyond that, we've mentioned four different ways that they could modify the property, remove the kitchen, demolish it, start over, alter the height, or it could remain the primary residence, and then you build a secondary dwelling, but the secondary dwelling would only be limited to 800 square feet. So all of those are, still allow you to use it, it just, but it doesn't allow them to use it the way that they wanted to use it.
Correct.
So that's the first, so in any, so we have to determine whether or not it actually restricts the use as a residential property.
In order to determine that the claim is valid, you would have to conclude that it does restrict. And if you didn't conclude that it restricts, then you couldn't determine that the claim was valid, and you wouldn't have the authority to waive the regulation. Because part of what's going on with this, from, you know, take from an opponent's point of view, is the council shouldn't have the authority to just use Measure 49 in order to waive some of the ordinances that you've adopted for particular pieces of property. Measure 49 says, actually, you have the authority to waive those ordinances without going through a land use regulation amendment process, so long as it meets these five criteria. So you have to determine it meets each of those five criteria in order to have the state law allow you to waive a particular regulation.
And you're also saying that in order for us to say that it actually restricts the residential use, there has to be no other option available to them to be able to make this work? And we've listed four that make it work.
Right.
And then the second part of it is that the, the regulation must, must be, must not cause a reduction in the fair market value of the property. And that's where the appraisals come in, and whether or not they're appropriately done is the issue here. And the standard is set by the U.S. Use PAP, and then, and you're saying that it doesn't meet that standard, which is the commonly accepted standard.
So more than the commonly accepted standard, Measure 49 actually says it must meet the Use PAP standards.
It must meet, yeah.
Yes, so that's a Measure 49 requirement. You look to Use PAP, the national standards, to what are those requirements, but Measure 49 says must meet those standards, and the desk review we provided says it doesn't.
You guys are saying it does not?
Correct.
And that we're not restricting the use, therefore deny the Measure 49 claim.
Got it.
Okay, I have one more person in the queue, and we are a little over time. So Claire, and then hoping everyone else is good.
Yep, just a quick information request. So Glenn just mentioned the five criteria that need to be met, and I know you verbally explained that to us, and it's embedded in these documents, but for Monday, could we just get a bullet point of what those criteria are as required by?
Certainly.
Measure 49, thank you.
That's great, that was very informative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome, changing of the guard.
Just a little bit, so we can have Mark lead our discussion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Vinson, members of the council. So for this work session topic, which is new housing development that relies entirely on unimproved roads as access point, I will frame the magnitude of the issue, define terms such as unimproved and improved roads, and county and local access roads, and then step through the four issues identified in the work session poll and outline the city's current policies and practices. So in terms of the magnitude of the issue, there are currently 490 miles of improved streets and 52 miles of unimproved streets within the city of Eugene. The estimated cost to improve the unimproved streets to meet urban street standards is about $60 million. And then outside of the city limits, but within the urban growth boundary, there are 68 miles of improved streets and 47 miles of unimproved streets. And for us, our working definition of improved streets are those streets that have been fully designed for structural adequacy, have storm drainage facilities, provided which include curbs, gutters, and have either an asphalt, concrete, or Portland cement-concrete surface. And unimproved streets are those with soil, gravel, or asphalt mat surfaces that typically have simply evolved to their existing state, have not been structurally designed, and have few, if any, drainage facilities, and no curbs and gutters. So the first issue identified in the poll, the work session poll, was potential policy changes that consider developer, resident, and city responsibility for bringing unimproved roads to city standards. So currently, unimproved streets within the city of Eugene are improved either through new development projects, or through assessment projects, or local improvement districts. So for new development, under Chapter 9, the Land Use Code, requires the following of new development subject to a land use decision. And it reads, "The developer shall grade and pave all streets and alleys in the development site," and this is typically, these are typically new roads within a subdivision, so this is typically not an issue, it's pretty straightforward. But the second part is, "The developer shall pave streets and alleys adjacent to the development site," and then it goes on to say, "Provided the city makes findings to demonstrate consistency with constitutional requirements." And this is more about what's reasonable and what's fair, or what's proportional. So for streets adjacent to new development, our priority is to improve the streets. However, sometimes it's not practical to a half-street improvement for the frontage of the development when it's a long stretch of unimproved road. In those cases, the city requires on arterial and collector streets that the developer pay an equivalent assessment, and on for all streets, in addition to the equivalent assessment on arterials and collectors, a developer signs an irrevocable petition, which is really the property owner, future property owner agreeing to participate in a local improvement district. And since 2002, the city has collected over $968,000 in equivalent assessments on 18 different streets. Only one of the 18 streets, Elmira Street, has been improved through a local improvement district with partial funding from previous collected equivalent assessments. The other process to improve unimproved streets is our capital improvement process, and that's creating local improvement districts for the design and the construction of street improvements, with the abutting property owners being assessed for the cost of those. And those projects are typically initiated by the city council through the adoption of the capital budget, or they can be, excuse me, initiated by a petition poll of abutting properties or benefiting property owners that will incur more than 50% of the assessable cost. The second issue is the implications of outward growth decisions as they affect unimproved roads. And this is more, this isn't, this response isn't based on research or data, it's more intuitive or experience-based. So the increased development reliant on unimproved roads increases the demand on unimproved roads for all modes of travel. In addition, because unimproved roads aren't structurally engineered, the increased traffic of new development increases the deterioration rate of the pavement service surface. And finally, because unimproved roads typically don't have facilities of all modes and travel, the risk to public safety on unimproved road increases with new development. The third issue was to develop a comprehensive plan for unimproved streets, including county roads as they are brought into the city through annexation. So I'll describe our existing plan for improving unimproved streets. So unimproved arterials and collector streets are identified in the transportation system plan, or, which you'll, I guess, decide on in the coming weeks, which identifies projects that should be developed over the next 20 years. And then those projects are prioritized and move forward into the six-year capital improvement program. And the first two years of that six-year capital improvement program roll into the annual capital budgets, and then we, after that two years, then we go through another update of the six-year capital improvement program. The funding sources for arterial and collector street improvement projects include assessments to the benefiting property owners, and then transportation system development charges for the city's portion of the project cost. And just as a, as it works out, and it's not by design, but as it works out, most of the time, that ends up being about 50% of the cost is borne by the city as a whole through system development charges, and 50% is assessed to the abutting property owners or benefiting property owners. And so the most recent example is city-initiated improvement products were formed in 2009, and those were to improve Chad Drive, to improve Maple and Elmira Street, and Elmira, you mentioned earlier, was the one that had equivalent assessments that used to pay for a portion of that. And then Crest Drive, Story Boulevard, and Friendly Street. And just to note, those projects were developed during the recession, or constructed during the recession, so the prices we received were very favorable. And Crest, the city's portion of Crest, Friendly, and Story was funded out of the general fund because they were local streets. And because of the, the construction prices were low, the council decided to use the remaining budget of general fund money to lower the assessments on all three of those projects. So we spread out the savings in construction prices to lower the assessments for all three of those projects. Then in 2011, the city initiated a local improvement district on Jefferson Acres through the adoption of the capital budget, but the work stopped on that project at the council direction when the majority of the residents opposed or objected to being assessed. But more recently, in the last several months, we've met twice with the Jefferson acre folks to talk about street improvements and sidewalks in particular. And so there's a, there's an interest in a willing, there's an interest in the improvement, and there's a willingness and acceptance of being assessed for that improvement, but the rub is the amount of the assessment. And if the question comes up, I don't know what the sweet spot is between what a reasonable assessment is. And then similar to the city, the county also has a long history of funding improvements of unimproved streets through local improvement districts. And so when the county does a street improvement project that assesses properties within city limit, they need the city's permission to do that, and likewise, when we develop a project, as we did in River Avenue in 2005, which included both city and unincorporated properties, the county board of commissioners had to approve the city ability to assess county properties. And again, we did that on River Road over 10 years ago. So then the final, the fourth and final issue was ideas of policy changes toward county road annexations without a plan for their improvement to city standards. So the final two definitions I have are the two types of roads within counties, and both are defined in Oregon statutes, and they're a county road and a local access road. And each type of road has a separate process for transferring jurisdiction from the county to the city. So the definition from the statutes are, a county road means a public road under the jurisdiction of a county that has been designated as a county road. And a local access road means a public road that is not a county road, state highway or federal road. And so a county road that's inside a city may be transferred to the city by mutual agreement between the city and the county, and either the city or a county may initiate the transfer of jurisdiction. Once the transfer of jurisdiction has been initiated, the county must provide public notice and the opportunity for a public hearing before a final order by the county government surrenders jurisdiction. And the transfer is not complete until it's formally accepted by the city. Upon completion of the transfer, the county's jurisdiction ceases, and the city assumes the same responsibility over the former county road as it has for any other streets. The jurisdiction of a local access road changes from county to city upon annexation of the roadway. So annexation of real property in streets, or public rights away, are made by city council on a case-by-case basis, and streets are typically annexed with real property when it is necessary to attain contiguity for annexation of the real property, or where it's necessary to provide infrastructure services. Right now, there's not a formal agreement between the city and county regarding jurisdictional transfer of county roads. Each one is considered on a case-by-case basis. One example that will be upcoming is the jurisdictional transfer of two short segments of River Road between Rosewood and Maywood, and between Mary Lane and Hoard Lane. These were both recently annexed by the city council. And these sections of roadway are fully improved and were recently overlaid by the county. They're the last two sections under county jurisdiction south of Beltline, and at the city's request, the state recently lowered, through a speed study, that lowered the speed limit on River Avenue to 35 miles an hour. And so the reason for pursuing that jurisdictional transfer is to have clarity and continuity in traffic enforcement on that section of River Road south of Beltline. So with that, I'm completing with my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that's great. So Mike, do you want to put your motion out first, or a little clarification?
I'm, I'm happy to do that. Actually, I thought I'd speak a little about what I think the problem is, and there's a bunch of them here, and then I'll make my motion maybe in round two.
Perfect.
I asked for this work session last year, and I've been, but I've harped on this issue for years about us creating a comprehensive plan for unimproved roads. So this presentation of yours, which was very thorough, was a kind of a mixing of two of these things. One, some of those issues that I've spoken about for years, and I suppose the work session poll had those as part of this. I wanted to narrow the scope of this down to what we're facing more of right now, and while these issues occur in almost all wards, there are some wards where these issues occur more than others. Wards four, five, six, and seven particularly have more issues like this, where more new housing is being developed on, where the major access is on unimproved roads. I'll use one as a specific example within my ward. There's, well, actually, there's two. Number one is, we built the Bascom Village, had Bascom Village, as well as a number of other places built right near the intersection of Crescent and Coburg. There's about 1,000 new units there. And the main access to either city bus service or to school bus service is walking down the edge of an unimproved road on the gravel on the side, and creating what many residents feel is an unsafe condition because of the state of the road. The more specific one within Ward Five is Gillum north of Iris Road, where it's several city block length of road that is an unimproved road, gravel on the sides, and two very deep two, three-foot ditches on either side for the entire length, so that you have to walk in the travel lane in order to pass if you're walking or biking. And then we permitted and allowed to be built north of that road, a very large number of homes, so that now the only way to, for pedestrians to pass is down this dangerous stretch. And we have, because of the way our policies are set, mandated that those houses along that road are the only ones that have to pay for that fix. That fix was necessary in part because of our decision to build the homes that created the increase in traffic, and because of our work around Vision Zero, saying that we want to have our, the standards of our roads be better and safer for everybody. I'm running out of time here. My point is, our policies reflect, and Mark used the term benefiting property owner. I would suggest that you could, you could create the case that those property owners along that way are not benefiting when, when they have to pay predominantly for something that they, the need of which they did not create. And I'll need another round to finish here.
Alan?
Although, taking on a bigger picture, the current rule is that improvement costs to an unimproved road are done by an LID of the local residents on that street, and they pay for it. And we've done that many times, Chad, Maple, Elmira, Crest, Story, Friendly, and working with the Jefferson Acres folks. So that's the current, the reason that rule's in place, as I understand it, was because all the people that already have improved roads already paid for those improved roads and the cost of their house when it was developed. The developer built that road or paid for that road, so when you bought your house, you already paid for that. What, the rub for unimproved roads is those people have not paid for that improved road, and what, if we said, now the city's going to come in and pay for that, that means everybody else who's already paid for their improved roads needs to pay for this unimproved roads when we already paid for ours, and that's unfair. I got that about right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, so that's, that's the major rub, that you're asking people to not pay for the unimproved roads when everybody else already did. And, and, and so, on one- And, and, and so, and once we, the street is improved, then the city maintains it.
That's correct.
And so, but we've recently done overlays on unimproved roads to maintain them. A really good example is, and the great work on Riverview Avenue in the Wooler Hill Valley was done in my ward, and it's a great overlay, and it works really well. Neighbors were split whether or not they wanted it done, because most of them thought, half of it thought it was traffic calming, and half of it thought it was a pain in the butt. So, but it seems to be well-received. So I guess the safety issue is that nearly all unimproved roads don't have sidewalks, curbs, gutters, so they require people to walk in the street. So the fact that we've adopted Vision Zero means that we want to have no injuries and/or deaths from our transportation system. Every single one of those unimproved roads puts people at risk. And I don't know what the stats are about whether or not people are hit by cars more on unimproved roads than improved roads. Do you happen to know that? Or could you?
Well, my recollection from the Vision Zero work session, if you looked at the, because they had a graphic of automobile or motor vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle accidents, and in the primary corridors were the busier streets, not the, so it was the arterials and collectors that were the most dangerous to any mode of travel, not necessarily whether it was improved or not to a local.
Do you know if there's any statistical from that work group, any statistical difference between improved road and an unimproved road that are in neighborhoods as to their safety?
Well, I think you could go through the, I mean, the way they developed those graphics is going through the recorded crash data. But I don't know the details of that, but, but the result was, is that the major street system were more dangerous for all modes of travel. And those are generally improved streets, or the altered.
The more it gets used, the more likely it is to have.
Right, there are more opportunities for conflict.
Right, so that makes sense to me. So I'll wait for Mike to introduce his motion, if he's going to do that, before I speak to it.
Chris?
Yeah, I think this is a really valuable topic to talk about, and what I want to do is stay, is try as much as possible to stay focused on the specific question. And so when you talk about, you know, 1,000 units coming in, and the city's decision to build them, the city didn't decide to build those 1,000 units. The city was a participant in maybe 100 units at Bascom Village, but if the others were privately built, the city didn't decide to build them. A builder decided to build them, and they simply have the zoning, and they got the permits to do it. So why I'm saying it that way is I'm trying to get at who is responsible for the building? Is the city responsible for the building, or is the developer responsible for the building? I think if you're talking about Bascom Village, yeah, I can, there's a nexus perhaps there, and that might be part of what needs to be looked at for that. But for that other 900 units, I'm trying to get at what is the level of responsibility? What is the fairness with regard to what the city's role should be? And so that gets me back then to this specific motion. And why I could be willing to support it in terms of getting something back to look at more closely is its specificity. It's zeroing in on a specific question around which I think we need to have more conversation, but I would be interested in, in hearing that conversation. I agree, there has been a tradition for over 100 years of the neighbors along an unimproved street improving their street. The question is, what should be the triggering element for that? If they are dissatisfied with the condition of their street, and I have streets in my ward, where the people are unhappy with the condition of the street, but I can't get 50% of them to form an LID, and there's no housing development at the end, there's nothing external that has triggered it. And I think that's really what you're trying to get at, is what do we do in a situation where some external factor has triggered the need for that street to be improved? And to what degree then is the city responsible for somehow mitigating that trigger? I don't know what the answer is, and I'm looking for something that is not only fair to the homeowners, but I'm also looking for an answer that's fair to the city. Because I don't want the city to take on responsibility for something that it didn't do either. So if, if, passing this motion will bring back that conversation in a much more robust form, I'm willing to do it. I don't know if we have to have the motion or not to have the conversation, but I think your point is, without this motion, this will somehow get lost in the ether and not talked about for another two years. So I'm sensitive to that. And I'm willing to support this simply because this is an important question. It does need to be talked about. If this motion will get a talk about sooner rather than later, I'm okay with that. But I do think there's a lot of conversation that still needs to occur around the degree to which the city's responsibility occurs, because it's a very big financial issue. And I don't want to accept financial responsibility unless it's appropriate.
Who have I got next? Claire?
Thank you. Well, I definitely appreciate Councilor Clark raising this issue. I'm looking at my Google Maps and the roads that you talked about, and, you know, major roads without sidewalks leading directly to Gillum Elementary School, where, you know, I think as a city, we are very supportive of the school district's Safe Routes to School program, and that's very, very difficult to implement when you don't have safe sidewalk access in the vicinity of the schools that you're trying to get the kids to walk and bike to. So, you know, I think there's some real imperatives in terms of public safety and public health that could be addressed with some of the proposals that Councilor Clark is bringing forward. I do worry about the fairness issue and equity as well, because, as mentioned, there are other neighborhoods that have been in the city for many years that are not improved. I think for me, a little bit of the distinction would be, is it an arterial? Is it a major collector? Are we expecting a lot of traffic on that street and conflicts with bike and pedestrians, if that's what we're also encouraging? So I think there could be some distinction between a neighborhood street that deadends into a cul-de-sac versus a more heavily traveled street in terms of automobile traffic. In terms of the specific motion, and I know it's not on the table yet, but I think some more specificity about which roads would need to be improved might be helpful, and I don't know if it would be helpful to also reference the Complete Streets policy in the proposed motion. So those are my thoughts right now.
I'm going to go for a second round, but I actually just wanted to zone in on, hone in on something that you said, which is, it does seem to me that there is an equity issue, which is there are neighborhoods who have unimproved roads because the homeowners there just can't afford it. They might like it, but they just can't afford it. And so they've been left out of this for decades. And, and if we're making zoning or planning decisions that allow developments nearby, and it's impacting the slower socioeconomic neighborhoods, then yes, I just support the urgency of this particular conversation. I think it's an important question. Okay, you're back.
Thank you, Mayor. And you and Chris both kind of put your finger on the piece. Alan, I couldn't agree more that there's, there's an equity piece, Emily was in here too, and I jumped ahead of her.
No, I'm sorry.
There's an equity piece here about everybody pays for the roads in front of their house, and that makes absolute sense. I've supported that forever. This is subtly different. This is when we make policy choices that say things like, we want to grow more densely. So when someone bought a home at the edge of the community with an unimproved road that they never imagined, nor do they want, to see become suddenly the main access through which an entire new neighborhood is now traveling, where it never happened before. Now, it's not the quiet country road at the edge of the city where they lived and bought the house, and they didn't care whether or not it ever got improved. Now, it's unsafe, and the city has said, we're going to permit these, this new development on the other side of it, and there's no choice but to drive in front of your house on this unsafe road. That's our decisions affecting those people's homes, and we're now, at the moment, our policies offload the cost of fixing that problem on the adjacent property owner. My, idea for my motion is, as we're making policies that we're going to grow more densely, that's fine, we should. We should do this as, as a community's making choices about safety and about density. The outlying impacts shouldn't be borne just solely by the residents of one particular place that have to bear them unequally. They should be borne more, more globally by the community. And those numbers, and where that equity piece exists, I'm certainly flexible on too. But the way we're set up right now, we're not set up, it's not fair, and more importantly, the way it's set up, it's not happening. We haven't formed any LIDs because it's unaffordable for the local residents. We're not fixing the unsafe streets, and we're not acting because we're stuck. I don't, I don't necess, I'm not wedded to some final outcome in language here. I'm just trying to get us unstuck so that we're making streets safer, and doing so in a way that's more affordable to folks that, that kind of end up getting stuck with the cost. So I'm going to make this motion now, if I get a second, then we can have a little more with it, I suppose. Move to direct the city manager to return to the council in the fall with a draft ordinance that establishes the following. And further into the council's policy choices regarding densification, Vision Zero, and what did you say I'll take as a friendly? Complete Streets. Any new housing development of X undefined number of units or greater that is predominantly served by substandard roads, or road, triggers road improvements that will be completed within X years of the development's approval, paid for by the developer and/or the city, but at no cost to the neighboring property owners. That will bring the road up to a condition consistent with council's Vision Zero policy.
One second, Dan.
I still have 24 seconds. I will say, there's a lot of X factors in here. There's a lot of variables, and it was only because I wanted to introduce the topic, have at least the room for enough approval and agreement that we move forward with it, so that we can debate where equity lives in the specifics as something comes forward to us. Thank you.
Okay, I have Claire in the queue. Emily, did you need to be in the queue also? Okay, and Alan. So I have Alan, then Claire, then Emily.
So I understand this motion relates directly to a proposed development in my ward, top of the hill, top of the Hendrix Hill there, next to Hendrix Park called Capital PUD. And basically, it's a lollipop where you have this unimproved, very narrow road going up to an area that's undeveloped, wooded right now. There's nothing that, one house there, two houses. And developer wants, guy who owns that house wants to develop this into a residential neighborhood. And with this motion, that would require either the city or the developer to improve that entire road at, I don't know how far back or what it would look like, but potentially millions of dollars before you could build that development. In effect, either killing the development, because it adds so much cost to it that it would, couldn't be done, or the city would have to do it, and then you'd have to get in the queue, and it might, the proposal might be delayed for years and years and years. And so that's the kind of dilemma. If you require the developer or the city to improve the road going up to any of those developments, because all these new developments of the end of unimproved roads are going to be, going to be areas that are undeveloped, and, and in, maybe in more rural setting areas that we have. So, and if you ask the opponents of the Capital PUD, they'd say that road is unsafe. Well, if it's true, then it's unsafe now, but they want, then this motion would require either the city or the developer to improve that road. But that road goes, where does it end? Where do you, where do you, do you go all the way back down to where it's, where it could be meant and improved road? That would be miles, and it would be, would be millions. So maybe you can help clarify how this, what the intent of this is. You know, throwing in the Vision Zero thing makes it about safety, which I'm all in favor of, but the, it seems like the real intent is about paying for the improvements to restrict development.
Can I interject one thing about how, in that scenario, the developer and the city, it wouldn't be, you're going to still have your constitutional finding requirements around Dolan and those offsite improvements. So as you say, if you were to say, you have to, as a condition of your approval, you have to improve these five miles of unimproved road, the, what we would likely be saying is, that's actually not proportional to their impact. So that's why you have circumstances where, you know, well, we can defend and justify constitutionally under our Dolan analysis, requiring adjacent or, you know, nearby within, you know, a certain area improvement of that. But once you start taking it down the road, that proportionality, you're going to have a difficult time finding that the impacts of that development is proportional to the cost that we're requiring them to give to the public. Because that's what, that's what a Dolan analysis is. So under this, the most likelihood was, it would be a combination. It would be the developer doing its part that we can require under Dolan, and then the city having, doing the rest.
Well, how far would that, what would that really look like? So say, Capitol Boulevard goes up, and it's a half a mile long, and there's a development.
So there's some, I mean, there's Dolan findings, while the law, the case say it doesn't have to be a mathematical formula, we often have the court saying, hey, can you show us the mathematical formula? So it really is, what are the very specifics? And I don't know the numbers for that, for that particular proposed development, but you really do need to say, what exactly, how many trips are going to be generated by this proposed development? How many trips are currently using this? How much, what, so what is there, a new impact? What are they adding to this facility? Here's what we want to require of them, and here's our argument of why it's proportional to the impact that they're having. So it really is very, very fact-specific, and every time there is an exaction, whether it be a requirement to dedicate property or a requirement for offsite improvement, we look at that Dolan analysis new every time. There is no cookie-cutter way to do it.
So this says, triggers road improvements that will be complete, to be completed. Does a development necessarily trigger road improvements?
If they're...
And how does it, how do you determine if it does or not? Just the point.
Well, it depends on, if it's an unimproved arterial collector, it would, it'd be either trigger the road improvement, or it would pay the equivalent assessment if it's, if it goes through a land use decision.
So we already have a rule that deals with that? Is that what you're saying?
Right, right. And it's typically, it's typically a half-street improvement for the frontage of the development.
Does that mean half?
Well, it's curb, so you're not, they're not building curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides of the street. So the Gillum example, so there's a development that's underway right now, north of Iris Road on Gillum, and they're required to improve just their half of Gillum with curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and then, I think they're, I think they have to do at least 20 feet of pavement. So they're not doing the full width of the road. And then they just transition back.
How far down the road do they go?
They're, they're only doing their frontage. And because they're not adjacent to an improved road on either side of the development, then they have to transition back to the unimproved road. So that, so it's a little bit more than their frontage, but no, not much more.
It's just their frontage, it's not the rest of it.
Typically.
I think that's the issue, is I understand it, it's not the frontage piece. If there's five feet off of your adjacency, you run into a ditch, who's responsible for that, I think is the, is the issue potentially. So maybe you can clarify this. So this says, new housing development, X number of units greater is predominantly served by a substandard road, triggers road improvements. So the only thing that gets triggered right now is that rule?
It's the land use code.
I can answer all of these, but I, our format doesn't allow me to answer the assumptions that aren't correct.
So I guess the question would be, what gets triggered? How does it get triggered? And how far down the road do you go? What becomes the city's portion of that? How does Dolan fit into that? And how does the developer fit into that?
Move to extend for 10 minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Okay. So actually, Emily hasn't had a turn yet, so I'm going to let her bump in. Emily, go ahead.
Thanks. When you're improving the road, the curb, gutter, and sidewalk, is the curb and the gutter also part of the homeowner's responsibility? Or does it go with building the street? And does, who pays for the street? The city?
For, for a local improvement district, and it varies by the functional classification, but the idea is that everyone pays the equivalent of a local street improvement. So for a local street, the property owners are assessed for the curb. So for a local street, the property owners are assessed for the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and the pavement. And then as you go up in functional classification, till you get to a major arterial, they're only paying for the curb and gutter and sidewalk and not the street, because it's viewed as the streets on a major arterial as serving the entire community. But it's, but the idea is that it's equivalent, everyone pays, regardless of the functional classification, you're paying the equivalent of a local street. But on a local street, you're paying for curb, gutter, and sidewalk and a portion of the pavement.
So when Broadway was repaved, the city paid for the pavement, and they put in new curbs and, you know, corner sidewalks, but I didn't pay for that part.
Right, so once a, once a street's fully improved to city standards, then the city assumes the maintenance responsibility going forward. And the exception, as you know, is sidewalks, in which the existing property owner has the responsibility for sidewalks.
It's only a one-time cost.
So then when you buy your house that's already made on a, on a street, you're basically paying for that street. It's like, you know, they paid for the foundation. It was part of buying, buying the property. And if it's the street, then the city maintains it, and if it's a sidewalk, the property owner maintains it. I would be really interested in talking about this some more, but I'm not ready to say anything about numbers of units or within years, so I don't know how that affects passing the motion, and when it's your turn, I'm sure you'll tell me. But I'm also really concerned about the equity issue. This is something that's bothered me for a long time. Safety of downtown sidewalks, not in the commercial area, but the residential areas, is atrocious, and it's a really big safety hazard, and wheelchairs and strollers can't go down there, and, you know, I trip on them. It's really dangerous. So property owners in the city can't afford to fix them either, just as the people and the new developments can't. So I'm really concerned as we go forward with this, yes, I, you know, want Vision Zero, and I want us to have safe ways to get to new development, but I'm, I'm very concerned about unequal payment, and the city doesn't have the money to fix all the sidewalks. So this is a big concern to me, and I think it's bigger than unimproved roads. Thank you.
Okay, Claire.
Thank you. So I won't be able to stay past our 10-minute extension, so I hope we will vote before then. This is a draft, absolutely. Obviously, there's still more details to be discussed and worked out, but I think it's an important first step into this kind of morass of the conversation that is being raised here. So it's not the cure-all, it's not the final answer for the things that are concerning to us about safety and equity, but I think it has the potential to provide one solution for one particular circumstance, and maybe point the way to further solutions that we can work towards together. But there, there's not going to be a perfect, totally equitable, everyone feels great about it solution. It's just, it's, it's too complicated and historically complex. So I think we just kind of have to accept that and do our best to be mindful as we go forward. I would like to ask, assuming this motion passes and we continue this conversation, that at the next conversation on this, that if you could provide us with kind of just basic definitions of arterial, collector, residential, you know, what are our road classifications as they are dealt with by your department? And, yeah, that's, that's my request. Thank you.
Manager, did you want?
I'll have a couple of brief comments after you vote.
Okay, all right.
I would just also bring back to us for that fall, map of unimproved roads, and also map of undeveloped residential properties in association with those, so we can see where this problem exists and what it looks like both now and in the last year.
Okay, I have Emily and Alan.
I'm just wondering if we can't make a motion to have a work session on it, rather than going through this work of drafting an ordinance that then, you know, is so specific when we have so many questions.
The reason is to move us forward and take action, and there's an opportunity for us too, but it will require us both a work session, a public hearing, and then another work session after that going forward in this form. So it allows us to act, and I actually stepped back from the specific thing that I suggested in the first place, after conversation with our city's attorney, in order to make it more broad and facilitate more of a conversation, rather than go with the solution I think exists already in my mind. So I'm hoping that we can pass this and move forward with action, but at the same time, have more conversation around what the specifics look like.
And we would definitely be back for another work session before we would be able to draft an ordinance, and then, and also the like, I mean, this will be Chapter Nine amendments, so you'll have the planning commission process also, but before we, before you're able to land on even what that, with more specific direction regarding the ordinance, we will be back for another work session before you see an ordinance come to you. At least one, maybe more.
Okay, Alan?
I agree with Emily. I would, I'm not going to support this, because it's too specific of a solution for a very big problem, so I won't support this. I would support a work session to talk about this in the fall, and that puts it on the calendar, moves us forward, and accomplishes that goal. But I sense that it's going to pass, so as well as the information that's already requested, our current policy of how we ask for improvements from developers, how that gets paid for, and, and then how Dolan fits into this, and who, and when we think about this, how would you make this work equitably? And if it's only in new places that get development, then all the other places that don't have, they're what, the 56 miles of, 68 miles of unimproved streets? What about them, and how does that work? And so all of those get pushed to the back of the queue for every development that comes up, if the city ends up paying for it? So that's the kind of questions about equity around this comment.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on this motion? All in favor? One, two, three. Opposed? Two. It passes?
Just real quickly, but since, you know, we've only seen this since this started, what, there may be other ways to accomplish this without an ordinance. My one concern with the ordinance is this requires the city to spend the money if it's not required of a developer, and regardless of available funding, so, and part of it could be unintended consequences around, I think it could put a damper on development. Complete streets are generally more expensive, so I think we need to think about that. And what happens if the adjacent neighbors actually don't want the developments? And so there may be other ways to get there, just through policy and CIP kinds of things, and try to meet the intent. And so we would like to bring back during the next conversation, are there other ways to get to this that perhaps provide additional flexibility for the council to consider? And so that's just what, as we're thinking about it.
If I could, I would just say, I walked back from a very specific motion, so some of what you said I think is awesome, and I would love to have the council discussion about as well, but some of what you said is working against the intent with which I asked for this particular thing, and I would not want to see. The point of the, of what's just here is about the fact that the city is making policy choices that are affecting a small group of people and asking them to pay for it. What I'm saying is, if the city is going to make large policy choices, then the city as a whole should pay for it. And if everyone thinks we should live more densely, then everyone should step up to some of the costs of living more densely. And that's kind of the point here, is that it's, it's not just to take the adjacent homeowner and make them pay the cost of larger-scale citywide policy decisions.
My concern is, I think I understand the intent, it's just not to have unintended consequences that we're going to regret in the future, and so that's, that's my concern. So.
Okay, that is great. Thank you all very much.